I want to call this meeting to order. Happy New Year to all of you. It's good to see you. A great crowd here. Welcome our two new commissioners. Joining us tonight. Love to have them here. Saw them up in Athens. Do the electric commissioners training and they survived. So that's, uh, that's good. And we look forward to having them a part of us. Also thanks to Martha Chuni and Jim Woods who have served us admirably for a number of years. Uh, if you would, please all bow your heads and you'll have commissioners' indications. O most gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for a new year. We thank you for your cleansing rain that will hopefully bring us a good growing season this year. We ask you, O Lord, to be with the citizens of Harris County. Bless them, protect them. Those who are mourning a loss, please comfort them. Those who are ill, please help them heal. We ask, O Lord, that you bless our two new commissioners, that you help them as they get accustomed to their new role and that they prove to be the type of gentleman that we like to see on this commission who give thoughtful consideration to whatever comes before us. Be with all of this commission and our county manager and our county attorney and our clerk and all of our employees that we may render good service to the citizens of Harris County. We thank you, O Lord, for all the blessings that you've given us. We ask that you continue your watch over us and be with our servicemen and women both here in the Rock as they stand and protect the freedoms that we so do and love. We ask these things in your Christ name. Amen. All right, thank you. I'm going to call on our county attorney, John Taylor, to give the [inaudible 00:01:37].
[Inaudible 00:01:38]. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on the agenda are the minutes from the regular session of December the 18th. Is there a motion?
I have a motion. Wait seven minutes.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Opposed? All right. Here's your names. All right. Next thing we get into is the, as is our custom, the first meeting of every January. We self-elect our chairman, our vice chairman, and then the county attorney and the county clerk will also be appointed. First item is the election of the chairman.
I move Becky Langston be chairman for 2019. I second that motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? You're none. All in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand. Opposed? Motion carries. Ms. Langston. Take the seat.
I want to say thank you for all of your help and it. And Harry, I want to say thank you for letting us for many years. Everly, everly. First thing I'd like to say is if you cannot hear, if you would just slip your hand up. We have a problem with microphones and I've had over the years complaints that you cannot hear what we're saying and you deserve to hear everything that's being said. So if you can't hear, and I do have a problem with projection with my voice, so just slip your hand up and we'll take that as a I can't hear back here and we'll try to remedy that. Uh, the next thing on the organization of the commission on the agenda is the appointment of the county attorney.
[Inaudible 00:02:34].
I'm sorry, the vice chair, I'm sorry. I have to be used to this.
I make the motion, Harry Langston be vice chair.
All right, there's a second.
Is there a second?
A second.
All right, there's a, there's a motion on the floor that Harry Langston be vice chair and a second. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, please raise your hand. We'll need another nomination for the vice chair.
I'll move Andrew Zerner be vice chairman for 2019.
Okay, we have a motion for Andrew Zerner to be vice chair and I'll second that. All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed. Okay, Andrew, congratulations, you're the vice chair.
Thank you.
Next now is the appointment of the county attorney and the county clerk.
I'd like to table the appointments till after the executive session tonight.
Okay. Okay, so that will be titled until after the executive session after the regular meeting tonight. ACs there in appearance as soon as the deed wants to sign up?
An individual did sign up, but he signed up for something that is not on the agenda.
Okay. All right. They're under old business on tonight's agenda. We have the appointments and reappointments to various boards committees and authorities. Uh, we made several appointments at the last meeting. Does anyone have any appointments?
I'd like to move that Jim Woods be my deputy need to represent me on the airport committee.
And there, we can do this all in one motion. Does anybody have any other?
I'd like to make the motion that Eddie Blackmore be reappointed to family and children services. Uh, that John Brent be reappointed to the planning commission. And that Jerry Smith be appointed for the vacant spot on the border tax assessors. His resume is in your file.
Okay, and I would like to appoint to the public improvements authority from the development authority, Craig Rhenamore, to replace David King.
I'd like to appoint Laura Tapp to the zoning adjustments and I have a resume that I just sent out today, so I had said we wouldn't do that on the big thing, but I believe that everybody on this commission knows she goes by Suzie Tapp or Laura Tapp.
Okay, any other, any other?
Madam Chairman, I would just, is your appointment to make as far as the mental health development more disconcerting, Jim Woods has been on that and would consent to returning to it if that being.
That's fine. I have no problem with that. Any others?
I'm sorry, that wasn't mental health, that was border health.
Border health, okay.
I guess there's another one that we could, because if you wish, Jim was also on Two Rivers and he would continue our, our, Ms. Andrew.
Um, he said to me last week that he could come off of that award.
He could come off. If I could ask exactly what is the Two Rivers?
Um, you need that information later. It's an authorization that we belong to, set in a [inaudible 00:02:36].
It does a lot with agriculture?
Yes. But I have back material.
All right, any, any other questions?
I'd be glad to serve us as our representative on that if you're making that.
Will you make it? Any others? That should get just about everybody. Okay, is there, is there a motion?
I think it was kind of a collective motion.
Okay. On all of it?
Yeah.
All of it, yes. Second, okay, and a second, okay. All those in favor? Okay. The next item under new business is the financial statement for October. Clint, if you have any questions on the financial statement. Is there a motion?
I think a motion that you approved.
Second. Okay, any questions or discussion? All those in favor? Motion is approved for the financial statement for October. The next item is our resuming and special use schedule for the coming year, 2019. Um, I have just a couple of suggestions because it had been brought to me on a, by several of my constituents about a zoning issue that was being held the night before Thanksgiving, the night before a holiday. So I would like to ask the board if we would consider moving the public hearing on July the 2nd for 2019, which is just before the fore on board commissioners and for the planning commission on November the 20th of 2019.
Moving into what days?
That's, um, AC's looking at the calendar right now.
Well, the Thanksgiving in the November is on the 28th.
Okay, all right, so that one would be good. November the 20th, what about July the 2nd?
July 2nd is, um, you know, that's on a Tuesday, you got 3rd just like.
Yeah, no, but that's, that's the week in the fall. That's right. A lot of people are not.
On the day 4, on July 1st.
We just try to get that week.
Yeah, yeah, we could. Can we do that and meet all the requirements that we need to make?
You could move it earlier. You can move it later.
Then the next, next, if you want to get out of that total week, it'd be July 8th, it'd be the next time and then the night is, um, if you don't, I thought it needs that.
All right, I'd like to make, I'd like to make the motion that we move it to that following week, to July the 8th. And we will adjust the dates accordingly if any need be adjusted. All right.
Can we make the publication dates?
That's what I'm saying, we'll check. We'll make sure those coincide.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Otherwise it's approved, there's, there's one change.
Right, which is the only change that I'd like to see.
That's it.
All those in favor? All those opposed? All right. The schedule is as submitted without one change to July the 8th. Um, next on the agenda is the county manager update.
Madam Chairman, board commissioners, the fiscal year is half over. So half a year is over, half a year is in front of us and all of our, uh, our goals that we need to accomplish, that's contained in the budget, are well on their way of being completed. Let me hit the high points and after I do hit the high points, I'm open for any questions the board may have on any one of these. Again, a lot of these, uh, a lot of these ideas and goals have been already accomplished. But hitting the high points, number 70, replacement jaws of live tools for EMS, we're preparing bid specifications for those items. Number 12, the locking system or repair of the intercom system for the prison. Again, the board approved a little bit of that several meetings ago and the pre-construction meeting will be held January the 9th. So that needed repair to the prison intercom and locking system is well on its way. Number 22, restriped various county roads for safety. Again, that's on bid, the bid opening is January the 17th and board consideration on February the 5th. Number 26, due to the continuing rain we've been having, I heard on the, uh, the national news, Georgia has received record rainfall this year and all of our projects are about one to two months behind schedule. And number 26, Eldersley Park construction is no different. But the internal road is almost completed, the turn lanes have been started, but have been delayed due to the rain. The playground has been delivered in multiple pieces and sitting on the ground, waiting for the company to come and install after it quits raining. So tentatively, Eldersley Park to be opened by late January perhaps, uh, but the road can be completed by January, opening sometime in February, and the grand opening ceremony is scheduled for March, again depending on, on the weather. Number 28, uh, the acquisition of six and a half acres of property for the airport wildlife fence project. We're preparing for a January closing on that 6.5 acres for the fence project at the airport in order to finish that project. Number 29, install phase two of the wildlife fence. That task order from our consultants will be on the next meeting on January the 15th for task order approval and once that, once that's approved for phase two, then bidding during February, award the bid during March and completion by July of this year. And again, that is mostly G-DOT funded, at least 90 to 95% is Georgia Department of Transportation funded. Number 33, remark the airport runway and perform some crack seal adjustments on the runway. Again, that will be on the next agenda for task order approval from our consultants on January the 15th. Again, bidding is during February, if approved, awarded sometime in March and completion by July of this year. And again, that is mostly G-DOT funded, at least 90 to 95% is Georgia Department of Transportation funded. Number 33, re-mark the airport runway and perform some crack seal adjustments on the runway. Again, that will be on the next agenda for task order approval from our consultants on January the 15th. Again, bidding is during February, if approved, awarded sometime in March and completion by July of this year. Number 43, the comprehensive master plan. There's a state imposed deadline for Harris County to complete its master plan by June 30. That means it has to be really completed by April, submit to the state so they can approve it because they have several months to, for the approval process. So that needs to be completed this April and the next meeting is January 15th during that commission meeting, beginning at 5:00 PM. Number 45, Melli Lakes. We did receive option number 7 today and afforded the board that revised plan. And now the revised plan from our consultants include options 1 through 7. It details option 1 through 7 of what they are, how they're to be built, and the price of each one. Again, um, so the state department of natural resources is looking to the county to make a decision on options 1 through 7 relatively sooner than later and engage the engineers for that design and then once the design's finished, we'll bid it out and the little bidder will then get, be awarded the project for construction. Number 48, the side ordinance. Again, that is on the January 15th meeting for board consideration. Number 53 is a new item. 53 is a new item, install a third monument sign at the Northwest Harris Business Park at the intersection of Progress Parkway and Davidson Road intersection using development authority funding of about $25,000 and we're preparing bid specs for that. And the board will then consider that at a subsequent meeting. And number 54 is also a new item that's been requested, clear and grab about 35 acres at the Northwest Harris Business Park, not 25, but 35 acres at the business park using public work forces and on the proposal, on the agenda tonight is a proposal for having our consultant, Harris Gray, prepare all the documents to obtain the required permits from the city of West Point as well as the state. Uh, and once all the permits received, then, which is about a two month process, to the public works group and then begin clearing, maybe April, or maybe March and April of this year. You can see in the lost and lost collection charts, um, in November, the, those two collection amounts did tick up substantially and we are, we are slightly above where we need to be on our collections. That, that's really, really good. T-SLOSS came in today and that's beating $6,000, again slightly up from last year and this time last month. Building permits, I do not have the new Jan, the December's amounts yet, but they will be forthcoming and basically that's the highlights of everything the county staff is working on currently that has budget money attached to it.
Do you have any [inaudible 00:05:33]?
No, I don't have any.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any questions on anything that Randy updated us on?
I have a question on number three.
Number three.
Purchase of personal fitness equipment for the community center is $8,000, says should be delivered in mid-January. Do you have any update on that? And my question is, is what are we doing with the fitness equipment that's already in there? Because that's a tiny little room.
It is.
If we're going to put in new stuff, what are we going to do with the old?
I believe this is for three pieces of new equipment. It's a new treadmill, some medicine balls, that's been, and all this to do with a question by the user.
Right.
A set of medicine balls, a new treadmill, a new stationary bicycle, and some dumbbells, which, and they'll be right at $8,000. And I believe these are all new items, not replacements, but I'll double check on that.
I was just curious. And then on number five, acquire a replacement telephone system for the community center of $10,000. Now, I teach schools, so $10,000 for a phone system seems a lot to me and I'm just wondering if you can.
Sure. The $10,000 is a budget item that will not be used. Zero dollars will be used for this telephone system. Instead, we are going to rent, or not rent, but lease a, a system, um, and that's part of the phone service. So we're not going to purchase anything like we originally thought, the budget is prepared, so we're going to save $10,000 and instead make a new phone system as part of the phone service and it's all one deal.
I got you.
For a five-year period. And so right now, Charter Spectrum, because right now the, the equipment we have now is obsolete, it's just, and it's, it's not really allowed. So with the new phone system from Charter Spectrum, we're, we should port over the phone numbers by mid-January and should have an operating system up there.
On number 24.
24.
Repair fencing to backstop at Motor Park, $16,000. I thought we had just had that done within the last year or so and put up some new screen and I did not realize that it's been damaged, did it get damaged at the storm? I was just.
Our parks director is saying that the backs of all of, most of, not all, most of at Motor Park are damaged in some way and that he wants to, to repair the ones that's damaged. And we have not started, started that project yet, we're still assessing it. But we have $16,000 budgeted, but that does not mean we have to spend the whole amount.
Right, okay.
And we will never go over the budget amount.
Number 23, I'm sorry, I skipped it. The number 23, repair Barnumville Road Bridge and I see that we were kind of in determining on who owns the bridge or what's going on there and I know that a little bit later, Mr. John's got, going to update us on something and I was just wondering if we had any kind of updates on that or if I, we want to wait till, till they.
I think the executive session would be the appropriate time to discuss that.
Right. Uh, number 35.
35.
Plans for the airport flying.
Yes.
Should we have any updates on that or are we still just working on it?
We're working on it. We're getting, um, various commitments from bands, car, anti-car show folks, the Silver Wings from Columbus, um, and I'm, unlike last year, I'm just, I'm dead set on finding insurance carriers that will allow the pilots on a volunteer basis to take kids up on a 10 or 15 minute flight. In the previous years, we couldn't find insurance to cover that. But we are searching high and low for an insurance carrier that will insure the county on a plane we don't own or maybe somehow acquire insurance that will allow children to get in that airplane to go for a 10 minute ride. Because what's a flying in without an airplane on?
Right. I remember when my children were young and we went out to the airport and I got pictures of them in the planes and all, so that's kind of why I asked.
Exactly.
Um, you answered my question on 43.
43.
You answered it.
Yes.
Um, I know on 46, you sent us an email about the rail trails and so I assume you're working on that.
Yes, and, and again, that project is a, is a 10-year long project. People don't think we're going to get it done, but we're going to prove them wrong in, in 2019, my golly. Um, again, the county has already received three federal grants. It totaled about $1.1 million, but that $1.1 million will not go very far. It'll go three miles from downtown High Mountain to the Cowley Villas. And I bet you that will be done out during maybe June, July, and be finished by this time next year.
Um, 49, reroute the stream for DeSole. I'm just wondering, have they already built the building there or are they going to build a building there? Did they not build it with the stream there? You know, I'm, I'm just curious.
It's a two-phase project. Phase one has been built and they're in it and running. Phase two, as soon as this is completed, then they can construct.
The second, I, but I knew I wrote about, I went out there the other day and I saw their building was already there and then I, I saw this.
The building right behind it.
Okay.
And, and on 49, the 1.4 million, it came in well under bid. It only came in at $400,000 top dollars. So there is a tremendous amount of savings in number 49.
Uh, and number 52, where are we with preparing a sharing agreement with Diverse Power for the countywide public safety radio system?
We are well on our way. We did talk to consultants this today and we're putting efficient fetches on the agreement between the county and the owner of our 911 radio system. We don't own the, our 911 radio system, so we share it with Diverse Power, which is IEMC. So we are at the final stages of incorporating a huge agreement to share their infrastructure for our 911 public safety radio system, which includes sharing a tremendous amount of frequencies and preparing also a maintenance agreement for Dean Ginn, which is part of this, to maintain our internal 911 equipment. So it's a multi-phase project. I should bring that to the board for consideration, probably the first meeting in February.
And number 53, what you spoke on, uh, just a little while ago about installing the third monument, where they want to put the monument, there's already a stone monument there. Are they trying to upgrade that monument to look like the other two monuments?
That's exactly correct.
Okay.
And since it's over, since it's over the $10,000 threshold, we determined that we're just going to bid it out and, and a little bit will, you know, be awarded that eventually. But it'll look like, it'll look like identically the other two signs.
I apologize for the question, but I'm, I'm kind of a curious fellow.
But again, these 54 projects are contained in the budget with budget, that the board approved budget numbers for, and so these were the items that I need to get, my staff and I need to get completed by June 30 because so then the next budget will have new set of, of, of goals. So, and this is our way of keeping track of, of what's done, what, what's, what's got done and what needs to get done and if there's any problems or, or issues. And every staff meeting I have, I have staff meetings twice a, a month, we go over this exact document to make sure all the staff members know that they have to finish these things by June 30 or, or there, there won't be problems.
Right. Well, I appreciate you giving us this, as often as I could look at.
I have that every two weeks. It's posted on our website for public consumption along with these various economic indicators of loss collections and loss. And, um, one of my favorites, it's not very sexy, but it tells a tale, solid waste tonnage. The more houses you come, on page 13, the more houses that are built, the more population comes in, the more trash they generate. So this is a good economic indicator of population growth, housing growth, and the solid waste tonnage reflects the, uh, single-family home building permits that are being issued. So they go hand in hand, and it's across, um, it, it's a checking balance. But again, if you can look at our solid waste tonnage, we're increasing tonnage almost every month. It's a big business.
Thank you, sir, I think that's all the questions I had, I had to monopolize.
Questions or nothing? So that's all, do you have Randy, you and our chairman returning, Mr. Taylor?
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chairman, let's, if you don't mind, take item eight first, and then, but as I believe there's a need to go into executive section to discuss any or threatened, uh, potential litigation, you can take that, take that last, and, and so on, if you don't want to. Number eight is in agreement with, uh, with, between the County and Harris Gray for a survey erosion and controlling plan and a permitting. Uh, on item 54, on the County Manager's list that he just gave you a minute ago, they was, uh, the, the project is to clear and grub 35 acres, uh, in, in the business park. And, uh, that's what this agreement does, is, is, uh, is provide a, an agreement with, with Harris Gray, which is a, uh, company with whom, uh, we have dealt on numerous occasions. And every, and our work has always been, been good with them, but what this will do is, is clear 35 acres for, uh, for sale, we hope. We found that, uh, industry, industries come through town and through the county, they, they're not going to go out there and look, look at a piece of land and not be able to see what it looks like, and what the layout is. And, uh, so if you have a piece of land that's, that's, uh, ready to go, uh, they're more, more conducive to buying and locating, uh, that. This is in the Northwest Harris Business Park, where you have water, where you have sewage, uh, and, uh, the, uh, and already, already have some industry up there. What we'll need to do is, uh, this agreement is, is retains or continues the association with Harris Gray as your consulting engineers, and to be fair, the necessary documents, uh, and, and to be able to get the soil erosion control, uh, permits from the Georgia EPD. And then we'll have to get all the other necessary permits to be able to, to disturb the, the, the land and be able to do the, the grugging. Then our county's public work crews will begin to clear and grub the acreage and eventually have it ready so it's, it's, you know, it's, uh, site, site ready to be, to be sold. As your agenda material provides, it takes about, it will take about a month to complete all the permitting. And, uh, well, a month and a half to complete the permitting, and then it'll take several months after that to, to complete the clearing and grugging. But, uh, this is a, a, I've reviewed the, the contract, it is very similar to, if not the same, to several other contracts that you've had for the same, uh, for the same purpose. I would recommend it to you, Madam Chairman, for your approval, subject to one small change. There's item 3F on page 40, deals with government law and venue. And I would just change that to add that, uh, the, uh, the, the law and, governing law and venue is, is to be according to the laws of the state of Georgia, prevailing, and, and then also jurisdiction and venue will be in the Superior Court of Harris County. Uh, and then making that change, I would recommend to you.
Does anybody have any questions? And the total cost of this is 10,600, 10,060.
Correct, I agree.
That's the total cost.
With funding coming from the Development Authority?
I make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll say.
All those in favor?
Madam Chairman, I don't have any, any other items except this one item, and any light of notice, I understand there's, uh, a need to go into executive section to discuss any, uh, potential litigation.
Does anyone else have anything else that they need to bring to the table?
Before we go to the executive session, I would just like to personally and publicly thank both Harry Lane and Susan Andrews, being our chairman and vice chairman. I think y'all have done an excellent job. I just want to tell you that I look forward to working with both of you, and both of you on this commission, that we take Harris County, we move it forward, and we're all pulling in the same direction. So I want to thank you once again for your service and your continuing service. I appreciate each and every one of you up here with me, and it is a privilege for me to be here.
Thank you, sir.
And I echo that also, Susan, both of you, it takes an awful lot of time. Harry is giving up a great deal of his time, where he can, he had, he could be traveling, maybe. But we do appreciate it, we appreciate your service.
I echo that as well, I'm looking forward to working with everyone here.
Yes, I think that we can do great things as long as we're all together. If there's nothing else, is there a motion to adjourn?
I believe that we go to the executive session.
Of course, for litigation.
But I believe we go to the executive session to discuss personnel, land use, and litigation.
All for you. Land use, personnel, and litigation.
Okay. Your second? Thank you, it's good to see so many people here today.